Welcome, everyone. On this nice evening to the July 11th Eugene City Council meeting. And this evening, we are going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag this evening in honor of Flag Day on June 14th. And I'm going to read a little thing here and then I've asked Counselor Farr to please lead us in the pledge. All right. So ninety years ago, our nation first came together to celebrate Flag Day. An occasion when President Woodrow Wilson asked us to quote, "Stand with united hearts for an America which no man can corrupt, no influence can draw away from its ideals, and no force to fight against itself," unquote. This week, we mark nearly one century since that historic proclamation, and more than two centuries since the Second Continental Congress brought thirteen United States under a single standard. For over 200 years, our flag has proudly represented our nation and our ideals at home and abroad. It has billowed above monuments and memorials, flown beside the halls of government, stood watch over our oldest institutions, and graced our homes and storefronts. Generations of service members have raised our country's colors over military bases and at sea, and generations of Americans have lowered them to mourn those we have lost. Though our flag has changed to reflect the growth of our republic, it will remain in the ideals that inspired our great nation: liberty, democracy, and the enduring freedom to make of our lives what we will. As we reflect on our heritage, let us remember that our destiny is stitched together like those Fifty Stars and Thirteen Stripes. In red, white, and blue, we see the spirit of a nation, the resilience of our union, and the promise of a future forged in common purpose and dedication to the principles that have always kept America strong. Counselor Farr, we'll leave you some pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item for this evening is a public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have fifteen seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have twenty-nine people signed up to speak. First up is Jim Hale, followed by Patrice Dodson.
Mayor, councilors, Jim Hale, 1715 Lenia Avenue, Ward Five. In the early eighties and late seventies, I was a member of a twenty-one-member committee that wrote the Metropolitan General Plan. Been ten years on that committee and two years as its chair. During the course of that time, we identified a whole lot of things that we ought to be doing on our map that you were just discussing in your last meeting. One of the things that we identified was an urban reserve area in northwestern Santa Clara. Later on, Springfield, the city of Eugene put a sewer line up through the middle of western Santa Clara, and it's right adjacent to, got a couple of 300 acres of vacant land that you ought to be considering under your Goal Five analysis and ought to be considering as a way to add to the city of Eugene's urban growth boundary with the least possible public cost. Because you already have a fire station there. The county already has arterial, minor and major arterials and collector streets. School district already has capacity nearby. You need not go over the hill to the LCC basin where you cannot commit to a small acreage without committing to a very large basin and the attendant substantial development costs. You ought to be considering areas that are, if you're going to be considering something smaller, you ought to be considering something that will actually not cost you a lot of money, which you don't have anyway. And that would be northwest Santa Clara where the sewer interceptor that is this pig runs right next door to 200 acres, 300 acres, maybe 400 acres, whatever it is, that you ought to be considering as the most logical place to add to the city of Eugene. Instead of going to places like the southwest area over here where you're going to have another Lorraine Highway in the middle of, where we now have Gimble Hill Road, you're going to have another Lorraine Highway situation that you've been dealing with for years. Why would you want to take that on? Why would you want to take on a basin like the LCC basin just to aid and abet the people who want to develop Goshen and to be in competition with you for industrial development where they have an area out there where they'd like to take the Wellam River water supply and malappropriated, it seems to me? Why would you want to participate in doing that when the total cost of that basin is what you have to take on if you take on any part of it whatsoever? That's why we didn't put it in the metro plan to begin with. It's not because LCC wasn't there then. It was. It was an obvious place to grow the city over the long haul. But it was not a logical place to put an urban growth boundary then, and it's not a logical place for you to make a huge commitment for a small acreage now. Thank you.
Patrice Dodson is next, followed by Mary Salinas.
Good evening. My name is Patrice Dodson. I live at 1160 West 15th, and I am blessed to live in Ward One. Tonight, I am here as the angel of shelter. None of you knows me, but I know you. I watch most of your city council meetings and enough of the budget committee meetings to know how dire is the situation in Eugene. OMG, what on earth can be done to answer all these needs? Nevertheless, I am here tonight to ask for your help. I am an angel without wings. I'm working hard to earn my wings by helping to create a shelter for the homeless. I attend Saturday Market each week with my donation house. I'm here tonight to ask you to provide a site for that shelter. I can't do it all by myself. I need your help. I know there's a lot of acreage out there. I know there are plots of ground that can be used for homeless sites. I don't have the power or the money to produce these sites. The homeless don't have the power or the voice to help themselves, but you do have the power. You have ways to provide the needed acreage for these sites. That's all the homeless are asking from you. That's all I'm asking from you. I know the arguments. The homeless do not contribute to society. They do not add one bit of revenue to the coffers. They do not vote. It's not a high priority to deal with this demographic. We need industry and concrete and rebar. We need so many more important things that will add prestige and money to our city. But what we need most is to soften the heart of Eugene. It's becoming hard, and we're losing the humanity that has been one of our most treasured qualities. Someone once said, "The poor we will always have with us." Who said that? Was it Jesus or Warren Buffett? I always get those two guys mixed up. In any event, in the final analysis, Eugene will be judged not by the amount of concrete or industry it created, but by how it treated its poor. Please, please, go to work to find some workable sites for our poor homeless people. Thank you.
Mary Salinas is next, followed by Jerry Smith.
Yes, hello. My name is Mary Salinas. I live in Springfield. I live in Ward One. That's Mr. Van Gordon. I lived in Eugene for a couple of years. I started my work for the homeless here, and I'm back. I started work in Springfield last week. I'm so happy to have all this energy behind me. I'm bringing the homeless in all across the United States. I said it to the Springfield City Council. It's the first time I really said it out loud, and it's been years before I have had it in myself to say it. Last year, the hospital lost $30 million on the indigent. That's essentially the homeless. The city spent probably at least another $30 million on public safety. The community probably spent another $30 million on foster care, rehab, everything. That's $90 million. So my head goes, okay, that's $100 million every year. That's all you need. You could build schools with that money. That's one year. So we're talking every year, every year, every year. You have hundreds in, ten years, that's a billion dollars. A billion dollars. There's this man in Eugene who's now going to the Dominican Republic building homes. He can build a home for $4,000. That is $25,000 homes you could build with the first hundred million, 25,000 homes. You have the money. We cost you so much. I want disability checks for the homeless. No NGOs, no new offices, no new secretaries. You just give us a check, and we now become paying members of the community. We pay rent, we pay for food, we pay. We're not going anywhere on those small checks, but we will have the dignity of a roof and a door you can lock. You have no idea what a locked door means in this world. It means you won't be raped. It means you won't be stabbed. It means ordinary citizens can't hurt you in the night. The Encyclopedia of Social Work says, the Encyclopedia of Social Work says, "The solution to the problem of homelessness is neither complicated nor profound." They need housing. Housing. And you can afford it, and you have the land. No NGOs, none of that stuff. You just help the homeless. You have so much money, and you could use it for so many good things if you bring us in. And Eugene was chosen for this here at Christmas Occupy. You became, for some reason, Nexus for Homelessness. God chose you to do something extraordinary for which you're known. You do extraordinary things all the time. Mayor Piercy, you were chosen. You are the most liberal mayor in the United States. Thank you, Mayor Piercy, for bringing us in.
Jerry Smith is next, followed by Charlie Swanson.
I'm Jerry Smith. I live at 5041 Saxon Way in Eugene. I'm represented by Counselor Taylor. A wonderful counselor. I'm a veteran. I've saluted the flag and worked in our Capitol, doing a lot of that kind of stuff in the nation's Capitol. When I served, I knew that I was supporting civil rights. I knew I was working for public health and safety. And those weren't mentioned when we were talking about our flag. But that's what America's about. I've been speaking about the homeless for a long time, and I keep saying very simply, we need a safe, legal space for homeless people to park their vehicles, a place for them to sleep at night. The city has plenty of land and it even has buildings they could put people in if they chose to take care of people on a temporary basis. The Opportunity Village that's being presented makes lots of sense to me, and I hope that you'll support it. I'm looking for special care for disabled homeless people, and I think a wet bed would make, a wet bed shelter would make a lot of sense, save a lot of money for the city. I signed up tonight for Richard Kurtz. He's an older homeless man with one leg, one arm at work. He lives in a wheelchair. The only place he had to sleep last year during the winter was on the nights that we had the warming center. Last week, some meth freaks yanked him out of his wheelchair, took his wallet, stole his wheelchair and his backpack, everything that he has to make himself a home of any sort whatsoever. We have managed to get him back another wheelchair, and I don't think he felt safe enough to come here tonight. But that's the kind of person, there's no reason that we should be leaving them out in the bushes in the rain. It doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever, and I hope you'll do your best to provide a safe, legal space for homeless people to park their vehicles or sleep at night where they're dry.
Charlie Swanson is next, followed by Sabra Markroft.
I'm Charlie Swanson. I live at 2010 Fairmont Boulevard in Ward Three, Allen Zlenka's Ward. I'm requesting that the Eugene City Council refer to the voters of Eugene for the November 2012 election, the following advisory question on corporate constitutional rights and money as speech. The question is, shall Eugene voters instruct Congress to amend Constitution to limit political campaign spending and provide constitutional rights only to people? I would like to thank the council for passing Resolution 5055 on February 15th, which speaks to this issue. I think that Eugene's voice will be even stronger if the voters of Eugene can also have a say. I also feel that having the issue of a constitutional amendment as a subject of discussion during the election season will be helpful. Those running for office will more seriously consider the issue if people are bringing it up and asking those running for Congress or legislature about that issue. With independent campaign spending setting records for the amount spent and the negativity of the content challenging the effects of the Supreme Court's Citizens United decision will become even more urgent and likely more popular. Allowing Eugene voters the opportunity to weigh in on this issue is a small step towards getting more civil electoral campaigns and to increasing the capacity of normal citizens to influence governmental decisions. On another issue, I'd like to voice my support for securing a safe and legal place to sleep for those in Eugene who are homeless. On occasion, when US residents see a squall of slum in a third-world country with many people living in tarp paper shacks, they wonder at the unfairness of this. We should remember that in Eugene, a tarp paper shack would be a step up for most of the homeless. This is fundamentally a moral issue. Do people have a right to sleep? I contend that this issue is directly related to the advisory question which I'm proposing. If our governmental decisions, especially on a national scale, were less dominated by big corporate money, we would likely make different moral choices. Thank you.
Sabra Markroft is next, followed by Art Bowman.
Hello. My name is Sabra Markroft. I live on West Third Street in the Whittaker. Andrea Ortiz represents me. I'm here to talk to you about how things were a long time ago. A good friend of mine named Pat, when his grandparents moved to Portland in 1919, there were no jobs or housing for their family, so they and about 200 other families built tarp paper shacks down by the railroad tracks and lived in them for several years along with their children, cats, dogs, and other livestock. That was a long time ago. In 1945, a man I met named Lynn was seven years old, and he and his family moved to Eugene, and there were no jobs, and there was no place to live that they could afford. So they stayed at an auto camp called Cabin City, which was one of the last of the auto camps. And they couldn't afford the $30 a month to rent a one-room cabin for the first winter, so they lived in an army tent. And he remembers the wind blowing through the tent and how cold it was. And by the end of the winter, their dad had found enough work that he got the money together to rent a one-room cabin for the next two years until they could save up enough money to buy a very small house with enough room to grow some good food. If anyone tries to do that, to take that step out of absolute poverty now, it's not available. Because we don't want people to burn to death in tarp paper shacks, and we want children to be safe and have a bedroom that's separate from their parents and their siblings of the same gender, or the opposite gender, excuse me, we forbid people the freedom to house themselves at the level at which they're able. And we have those hard times on us again. And there are many people that would make their own way if they could, and if we can find some ways for them to do that, to take that step up from the gutter, then we would have a lot more resources for those who really can't make it on their own. And to end this, I just want to quote a very famous person who said, "As ye do unto the least of these, my brothers and sisters, ye do unto me." Thank you very much.
Art Bowman is next, followed by David Puccioni.
Hello. My name's Art Bowman. I'm, I live in the second ward in Eugene. I'm here tonight to speak about something that's been in the news a lot lately. That's the systematic profiling and harassment by the police of citizens of Eugene because of their socioeconomic status. We've seen sweeps throughout downtown. We've seen street kids, homeless people, people of modest means being ticketed for jaywalking. Often when they're crossing the streets and the "don't walk" sign has been flashed, someone excluded from the park blocks because they carried cream soda in a bottle. You all know this is happening, and what I find disturbing is the fact that I'm looking at nine elected officials, the only nine people in Eugene who are city government who are accountable to the people. And I know that none of you made this decision. It seems to have been made unilaterally. We all know why it was made, but we aren't talking about it. It's because of the Olympic trials. And I'm just disturbed that there doesn't seem to be any citizen accountability, because you are the people the citizens elect to hold these people accountable. The city is the one that gets sued if something goes wrong, if the police get out of hand, if it's decided that discrimination, according to socioeconomic status, is unconstitutional or illegal. So in effect, the citizens will be paying the legal fees and the legal penalties for any legal actions that come from this. But yet, the nine of you don't seem to have decided on this, and I find that disturbing. I think there needs to be more citizen oversight and accountability in all levels of the city government, including, in this instance, the police force. Thank you.
David Puccioni is next, followed by Andy Heben.
My name's Dave Puccioni. I'm from Ortiz's Ward. I'm here to support the homeless camp, among other things. And I also want this city of ours, Eugene, to support the students in Quebec that are fighting for the tuition hikes. I know this is something that happens not just in Canada, but it's happening everywhere. When I was in Rutherford, I was going on there too. I also want to talk about the corporate personhood issue that was brought to your attention earlier by Charlie Swanson. And it's that I want the city council to refer to the voters of Eugene, the advisory question, which is, shall the Eugene voters instruct Congress to amend the Constitution to limit political campaign spending and provide constitutional rights only to people? And I think that if corporations were people, and it's obvious to me they aren't because they can't be executed for the maladies they've caused all of us, so I think it should be simple enough for everybody to agree that corporations aren't people. So fight the power.
Thank you. Andy Heben, or Heben is next, followed by Jean Stacey.
It's Heben, yeah. Andy Heben, representing Ward Three. I guess I'll start with a simple math equation. I know you all know it, but I think I need to say it anyways. Number of people currently going unhoused plus anti-camping laws minus the available shelter space equals a substantially large population that cannot legally exist in space. And you all have the opportunity to change that with this proposal that we are in the works of planning with the Opportunity Village. All we're asking for is a piece of land. We don't want any money, just a piece of land. So not only will it not cost taxpayers a dollar, it will, we're also using the seven pillars of the Envision Eugene 20-year plan as our basis. So I'm not quite sure how you guys could ever justify not supporting a plan that not only costs no money, but also meets every single one of these goals outlined by the city. The Opportunity Village would provide an opportunity for a self-governed horizontally-structured community where people facing similar issues work together in order to help themselves and make decisions that directly shape their living environment, creating a community that is actually reflective of the people that live there. And how many of us can say that that's true for us even? It provides the opportunity to renew life goals and aspirations and to engage in entrepreneurial enterprises that improve living conditions and economic well-being. This is not a catch-all solution. There would be community agreements. This is a self-governing community. There would not be alcohol, drugs, or violence permitted here. So it's not a catch-all solution. There would be people that would not fit in this organized environment. But what this does have the opportunity to do is to provide a platform to reduce those tendencies in future populations. And I believe that could become a national model for the country. And I don't think we should simply be looking for a place to be. I think we should be looking beyond that. We could create, not just a place to be, we could create a model for alternative housing that attracts visitors from around the world. Dignity Village up in Portland, people are traveling from around the world just to see this place. It can become a social campus where we're not simply trying to figure out what to do with the unhoused. We're actually working together. We're bringing these skills that everybody here has, and we're providing a place for those skills to come together and work with people and actually improve the living conditions. It also provides the opportunity to simultaneously address the issues of homelessness and sustainability. So I guess I'm an urban planner, and I have coincidentally researched this issue for, I think, two years now, and I would personally guarantee you that I would see this through and make sure that these things then come true.
Jean Stacey is next, followed by Joe Tindell.
I'm Jean Stacey, 944 West 12th, Mr. Brown's Ward. This community has done and continues to do so much around homelessness. The service level, innovation, and volunteerism is well-recognized. Even so, we need to respond to the growing need with new and additional resources and answers. We need to do so because so many remain unhoused and are beyond our current service capability. We need to do so because businesses, law enforcement, and neighborhood parks are all being affected. Our economic woes call for new resourcefulness and ingenuity, to try something new, to reduce costs, respond to need, and put us in the best possible position to face the new economy in which we find ourselves. There is a need for a pragmatism that aids the homeless and protects the livability of our community. This is the kind of hard challenge a community like Eugene has the intellectual capacity to meet. I am here tonight to tell you about a project that was inspired by the city's Task Force on Homelessness, in which a group of Task Force members have joined together and are literally snowballing other volunteers, including those currently unhoused, to manifest the Task Force recommendations. We're currently forming a 501(c)(3) that joins together the faith communities, human rights organizations, occupiers, unions, social service agencies, and a number of you on the council who have already brainstormed with us. Help us find our way through the bureaucracy of the city and help us begin meeting with the business community. Our first project is the first recommendation of the Task Force, a 24/7 place-to-be, and will be called Opportunity Village Eugene. Opportunity Village will not be a depressing blemish, nor will it be dependent on handouts and tax dollars. To get started, we need land from the city and donations from the community. But by growing our own organic food, creating our own cottage industries, building and living in our own microhousing, we will not only become self-managed and self-sufficient, but as a sustainable socio-eco-community, we will provide an inspiring implementation of all seven of Envision Eugene's seven pillars. We will be a pride to any neighborhood by offering safe harbor to those currently living in the neighborhood. in the neighborhood. Modeling ourselves after best practices, we will be sustainable and self-managed. We look forward to meeting with Chief Kearns tomorrow and with City Manager Reese on the 20th. And we thank City Manager Reese for expediting our placement on the work session agenda. We look forward to working with all of you for a better Eugene.
Joe Tindall is next. And then, after him, I had Richard Kurtz, but I guess he's not here, so it would be Ruth Demmler.
Hi, my name's Joe Tindall. I live on West Broadway. First, the city wasted $5,000. Occupy would have restored Washington-Jefferson for free, and many of us are, in fact, master gardeners. So, why are people homeless? Some believe the unhoused deserve their poverty because they're lazy or immoral. In reality, for street kids, it is alcohol, rage, or drug-addicted parents, sexual abuse, beatings, or other family strife that force the decision that sleeping in the cold and rain, facing public derision, and police harassment is preferable to remaining in their family. Many homeless are mentally ill, some are veterans, but our economy produces most of the unhoused. Jobs are relentlessly shipped overseas. Medical problems cause four out of five bankruptcies. Seventy-two hundred homes will be foreclosed in Eugene this year, forcing families with children onto the streets. Once there, with every passing day, getting back into housing grows more difficult. Despair sets in. A few years back, it was fashionable for public officials to spend a day in jail. Then they could say, "Oh, the guards are really nice, food's great, it's not that bad." Reality check: There's a gaping chasm between being there for real and being there with camera people following you around. See if you can conjure up what it feels like to be inside the skin of a homeless person who knows they will not get off the streets at the end of the day and walk to that Lexus in the parking lot. If you can access the mindset of someone dumpster-diving for food, cans, and bottles day after day, then maybe you can understand why the homeless self-medicate with alcohol or drugs. Now to the point. This building will soon be abandoned. It will probably remain vacant for years. When the space is reused, the building will likely be torn down, or the renovations will be extensive. We have an opportunity. An energy sieve, even unheated, provides far more warmth and shelter than a bush or a bridge, especially one with a $20,000 fence around it. I would like to believe that I am standing in Eugene's new homeless services center. It could even be the wetbed facility that has vanished from the discussion, a place where desperate people still using confined care and hope that gets them off the stuff and gets them off the street. Thank you.
Ruth Demmler is next, followed by Michael Peterson.
Ruth Demmler, 1745 Furcrest, Allen Zalinkas Ward. First of all, Larry Leveroni, who is our editor for the Occupy newspaper, isn't here yet, so I'm going to pass out the paper. We have an Occupy newspaper that our media committee has put together, and it'll be very informative, I'm sure, for all of you. It's been a very emotional evening, hasn't it? It's hard to-- I almost want to take a deep breath and wonder if I can say anything. I came tonight to talk about bathrooms, like I've done that quite a few times here. And quite a few years ago, we were supposed to have all these bathrooms put in by the city, and I understand you're doing it and that you're proceeding now with a plan to put out more bathrooms that are going to be open 24 hours a day. So, I thank you very much, for all of you, for making that effort. And I'll certainly be glad when I have no more complaints about no bathrooms. I also want to speak to two other items. The first item about corporate personhood. Charlie Swanson brought it up. I hope that you'll endorse that initiative so it can move forward. That's so important. We know what's behind it. Money rules in our country, and Eugene needs to step up and say it won't be ruling here. So, let's move forward with that initiative. The other item is Opportunity Village. I just love the name. I hope you do, too. It is an opportunity for a lot of people to get their things where they can take-- relieve their backs from carrying all their yearly-- all their belongings on their back. Believe them, I have a place for them to stay every night out of the rain and the snow that we've had this last year. I remember walking along the river path and seeing frozen sleeping bags, frozen stiff sleeping bags. And I've been by the bridge and looked under the bridge at night, and I've seen all these people in wheelchairs staying all night in the rain. This isn't a place for us to be living in Eugene when we have this happen to our fellow man. So, I hope that we can make a difference and really put some effort and support and see that we have some land donated for the People's Village. Thank you.
Michael Peterson is next, followed by Ally Valkyrie.
Hello, I'm Michael Peterson, and I would like to speak of the Campaign Against Corporate Personhood. Forgive the bib lest I drool over my notes. I am, again, with the Campaign Against Corporate Personhood, but I want to address one issue, especially since in the post-Wisconsin result and scenario. I find it fat chance that the unions, which was incorporated in the Citizens United decision, would be able to raise the sheer volume of monies that corporations would and, in fact, did raise. Thank you.
Next is Ally Valkyrie, followed by John Pitney.
Hi, Ally Valkyrie, Ward 1. Not in the microphone. Learned something new this week. Turns out it's illegal to drink out of a glass bottle in a city park, even if the glass bottle is only cream soda. Now, I didn't know this. Most people I've asked also didn't know this, and I have a feeling that some people sitting in front of me didn't know this until about eight seconds ago. I see people down at the park blocks with glass bottles all the time. I'm part of Saturday Market, where vendors make and sell glass bottles, and where I can see the reasoning for this rule in terms of public safety, I think it's safe to say that the majority of Eugene residents did not know this rule. Diana Tynan definitely didn't know this a week ago when she was drinking a cream soda on the park blocks. She learned the hard way with a $200 citation for violation of park rules. If that wasn't enough, Diana was then immediately excluded from all city parks for 30 days by Officer Judd Warden for the crime of having a bottle of cream soda. I think it's safe to say that if Diana Tynan had been a well-dressed woman sipping that bottle while reading off of an iPad, she probably would not have received the citation, let alone a park exclusion. But Diana happens to be homeless, a fact that the ticketing officer knew full well. I found out about this, and to put it mildly, I raised hell, along with a few others. And a few days later, the park exclusion was lifted in the interest of justice. Although Diana still has a $200 ticket to contend with, and I'm relieved she can go back in the park, but the fact remains that the homeless are being singled out, cited, and sometimes excluded from city parks for minor and often harmless offenses. And this is happening at an increasing and alarming rate due to the upcoming track and field trials. Two days after the ticket for the bottle, the same woman was cited $150 for improper use of a pedestrian signal because she crossed at the blinking "don't walk" sign. The exact same officers who ticketed her and half dozen others this week for that offense then stand idly by as county and city employees do the exact same thing at the corner of 8th and Oak. I've never witnessed a ticket issued to any of these folks. My thoughts are as follows. Police should not have the authority to exclude people from city parks at their discretion for a simple violation of park rules. Officer Warden has demonstrated quite well that police can't always be trusted to exercise proper authority, and I know of many other instances where people were foolishly excluded from city parks for harmless offenses. When an officer requests an exclusion under the downtown public safety zone laws, the matter must go before a judge. I think that park exclusion should follow the same policy. And the relentless citations issued to the homeless and poor downtown, citations that working people do not receive, are ethically inexcusable as well as a ridiculous waste of taxpayer dollars. I'm done with hearing both the denials and the justifications for this practice. Business owners are complaining more, the police say. The wishes of business owners to cleanse the downtown of undesirables should not be prioritized over the basic right to exist in public space. I don't care if you're housed or unhoused, local tourist or traveler, they're by choice or not choice. Everyone has the right to congregate in public space. Everyone has the right to equal treatment, and nobody deserves to be a target of law enforcement due to their socioeconomic status. Thank you.
John Pitney is next, followed by Robin Blumgarden.
My name's John Pitney. I live at 1243 Malvine Way in Santa Clara area. I'm speaking on behalf of Occupy Interfaith Eugene tonight, and I'm here to encourage you to put the advisory question of corporate personhood on the ballot in November. I'm a minister at First United Methodist Church, so you'll humor me if I preach. It's what I do. A long time ago, the prophet Isaiah said, "It's just sad when you add house to house and join field to field until there is no room and you're made to dwell all alone in the midst of the land." In the last 3,000 years, the consequences of a tiny number of people enriching themselves at the expense of the populace have changed very little. In the history of the world, our power has never been more corporatized and conglomerated, while as people, we've never been more sad and lonely. If there's a difference today, it's that the consequences go well beyond our species and the impact is generational. I do apologize for not starting my sermon with a joke, but here it is. Every human being on the face of the earth is made in the image of God. The joke is that corporations are made in God's image, and the joke is on us. Occupy Interfaith has met monthly since December in response to Occupy Wall Street and Arab Spring. We are 60 people from 15 faith communities, many of whom are here tonight, committed to joining with others to make the beloved community of justice and shalom visible here and now. We believe the Citizens United decision results in huge amounts of money flowing into our political system, shaping policy that disenfranchises about everyone you can name. We're putting our faith to work on three fronts: healthcare for all Oregon, homeless solutions and foreclosure, and corporations are not people. The longer we work, the more we realize that the unconstitutional power we now allow corporations is at the root of all the others. Mayor Percy, members of the city council, our citizens are tired. More and more of us spend our primal energy just to get food on the table, have little time to be involved in this broader work. Ballots make us take time to engage our conscience and our voice. It's one thing to pass a resolution, quite another to put the initiative into our homes whereas we educate ourselves on these matters. We also have a chance to have conversations with our children whose generation will be most affected by how we live now. So, please, let's get this on the ballot. Our immigrant foreparents came to this land from places where the image of God was the image of the king. It's time to speak up again and make ours a more perfect union. Thank you.
Robin Blumgarden is next, followed by John Monroe. Okay, John Monroe is next, followed by Majeska C. Green. Thank you.
My name is John Monroe, 1760 Olive Street. I wanted to take another outcome of Andy's little formula, which I think, as elected officials, you should be bearing in mind. It's that when you have a large unhoused population, plus the legalization of camping, minus any realistic shelter, that constitutes an Eighth Amendment violation, which leads to, in the case of precedents established in both the city of Miami and the city of Los Angeles, major federal lawsuits. In both of those cities, charges were brought against the city for violations of the Eighth Amendment cruel and unusual punishment when the police were using their discretionary powers to target homeless without any kind of other opportunities for the homeless to go live in shelters or other designated residences. The lawsuits were successful in forcing the cities in different ways and different times in order to collaborate. The city of L.A.'s lawsuit was very extensive. The city of Miami was very simple. I'm sure your lawyers can explain the differences with some research, or we could come in and talk to you about that. But the simple fact of the matter is that it ended up costing a lot of time, and it wasted energy of both the activists that were working with the homeless and the city resources to help the homeless, as well as all the other projects they were involved in. Just like Eugene, neither of the police departments were held accountable, in large part thanks to the activities of their unions and their lawyers. It was the cities and their tax-dollar base that were sucked out and dry, and the only people that made off were the lawyers defending the city in the first place. They get paid regardless. So, Harangue Long would do well, but no one else would do well in this equation if we did not reach an agreement ahead of time. What Ally and Art Bowman both spoke to is systematic harassment by the police with the most kind of superficial veneer of a justification around random, popular business complaints, without any systematic exposure of all the issues that are going on downtown. It's misinformation at its finest, and it is being done systematically, time and again. Having done some research, in 2008, the Students for Democratic Society organized a protest around the same time during the summer when the track and field tryouts were about to happen and massive social cleansing went on downtown. This is a four-year cycle, and we are tired of seeing it, and we would like it to stop now. And I understand that the system of accountability between the city council, the actual city management, and the police is very complicated, and you guys can't snap your fingers and make things happen. But I do think everything that is within your power to educate yourselves on the degree of harassment that is going on downtown, the liability that opens up the city and the taxpayers to the lawsuit, and the injustice of what is going on in relation to this harassment is very important. And I would like to help in any way possible for us all to come to a more amenable solution. Thank you.
Majeska C. Green is next, followed by Deb Frisch.
Majeska C. Green, Ward 7. I'm speaking for ACT, a community together in Lane County, and I'm one of the speakers for Occupy Eugene's Homeless Solutions Committee, as a number of others are tonight. Housing as a human right. What does this mean for us in Eugene? We have an opportunity to create together something new, something never seen here or maybe anywhere, a village springing up from community engagement with the city as a partner. Lately, I've been reminded of something I heard of on a visit to Latin America in El Salvador after the peace accords, where they referred to a new creature never seen before. In this Eugene library book about Argentina titled Horizontalism, I came across the same idea, the new creature. Now, we all have hard meetings, difficult collaborations, we all have hard resource issues, and there are hard decisions for you city councillors, the city manager, and everyone in the city structure, employees, boards, commissions, everywhere. It's hard, but we have before us an historic opportunity to work together to raise this new creature we have birthed here in Eugene, through which we will, I'm confident, all learn better the meaning of housing as a human right. In April, we spoke with Eric Tars, the Human Rights Program Director at the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty. Several of you city leaders also met with him. He was brought here partly by our Equity and Human Rights Center. We in the community look forward to working with him and you on this project in Eugene to help put meaning to the words "housing as a human right" and make the city a model for the nation on this issue. As you know, we need you city councillors to direct staff to work with us in the community on follow-up to the task force. Identifying a piece of land for a place-to-be is a key thing, but not the only thing. We also need you city councillors to make some adjustments in the work plans for all your boards and commissions. And we need you to ensure that the city manager directs the internal city employee board, called the Equity and Human Rights Board, to join in the opportunities before us to help raise this new creature. We also need a new board or commission of some sort, but I, for one, urge you not to make decisions on that too hastily before we, as a city and community, have a better sense of what is needed for what lies ahead. We have to have an infrastructure that truly helps us work together. If ever there was a need for community engagement, before the city sets something up, this is it, and we haven't had that yet. Now, through helping this new creature take its baby steps, we will all be learning better what housing as a human right can mean for us as we make this a human right city. Thank you.
Deb Frisch is next, followed by Helen Laguari.
I'm Deb Frisch. I don't live in a ward, I live outside the city limits. There are two actions I want to encourage you to take tonight. The first one relates to an article on the front page of today's City Region section in the Register-Guard. Despite the fact that hearings official Gary Darniel rejected a neighborhood's appeal of a transportation design decision by the city of Eugene, the city proposes to start building a compromise on June 18th. First of all, why compromise when you won the legal fight? Second, the compromise is a scary hybrid of the city planners' evidence-based design and the neighborhood preference. I think the hybrid plan is to have a bike lane on the north side of the mile-long stretch of West 24th and leave the bumpouts on the south side. The planners' plan was bike lanes on both sides. This asymmetry seems unbelievably crazy, even by city of Eugene standards. I beseech you to stick with the original plan by the planners and to-- I beseech you to stick with the original plan by the planners and to scrap the ridiculous compromise. The second issue involves the escalation of aggression between the Eugene Police Department and Occupy Eugene members, especially the young street dwellers who tend to congregate in the park blocks. I've been volunteering at Occupy Eugene Medical Clinic at Athan Oak from 1:00 to 5:00 on Sundays since early April. Yesterday, Lieutenant Mozanne stopped by. Several volunteers talked with him about the issue. In the last eight days, young members of Occupy Eugene have been given citations for skateboarding and for having a glass container in the park. Last Tuesday, there was an altercation between occupiers and EPD officers that led to some youth being arrested and others engaging in retaliatory acts of littering. It's true that many of these Occupy youth taunt and bait the police, which is self-destructive, not to mention it's based on the delusion that the cops represent the evil 1%. But the bad guys are primarily stockbrokers, politicians, and government-employed lawyers, not so much the cops. But I think that EPD has to work harder at resisting the baiting and taunting from these people. I also think EPD should stop enforcing every obscure park rule ever created, like the no-glass-bottle law. And the Eugene Police Department should view each encounter with these people, some of whom are clients at Occupy Medical, as an opportunity to debunk the delusional theory that the cops are the bad guys. I am asking you to ask EPD Chief Kearns to direct Lieutenant Mozanne to direct his officers to be kinder and gentler toward the disempowered, disenfranchised youth who occupy downtown.
Helen Legori is next, followed by Chief Swiftfoot.
Good evening. I'm Helen Legori. I live at 181 Westbrook Way, and Biddy Taylor is my representative. I just heard tonight that Eugene is adding more public toilets, and that makes me happy. I hope they're downtown. And I'm asking for hand-washing stations to go along with those public toilets. They will benefit the community at large, because things are spread from hand to hand. So it's a health benefit for our entire community that I'm asking. I've heard in the past that toilets have been trashed or used as drug sites. So I suggest an employment program, patterned after the vagabond street paper, using licensed homeless people to monitor the toilets and hand-washing stations. Employment is a piece of the solution to homelessness. Please consider this package deal. Thank you.
Chief Swiftfoot, it looks like Augusta, wala la.
There you go.
Okay, my name's Chief Augusta, or Swiftfoot. I'm a resident of Eugene, longtime resident. I'm also a longtime homeless resident. I am at large, at seven, never mind. Anyway, I'm at large. My experiences in the last two years has been a very sad experience. In the last two years, I have experienced myself over 24 arrests personally of me. I have had a clear record most of my life, clear record, except for a few things that happened way back when I was a young man. Now, I don't know what's going on, but I think EPD's a little bit out of hand. I think Springfield's a little bit out of hand, too. When they can walk up to us and bust us down for walking down a public sidewalk, a public sidewalk, that's yours and mine, not just theirs or the person who's standing next to us saying, "Float on, chief, because you're different. Float on, because you ain't got no money. Float on, buddy, because you just spent your five bucks in my shop, and I ain't got two minutes for you to pour your coffee or stir it." Well, excuse me, folks, that's not the way we do commerce. That's not the way we do a city, and that's not the way we run our public. I don't recall my tribe ever coming down on their people for not having a home. You know, a long time ago, our people had to walk thousands of miles, Trail of Tears. All righty? Now, I'm related to some of those folks, some of you are, too. Okay, well, that was a shameful damn thing, because half of them died. All right, well, I'd walk every night and day, because I don't have a place to lay down or sit down for five minutes without copper coming up there. Copper's not supposed to be a bad word, but I'll tell you what, it's leaving a lot of foul taste in my mouth, copper. Excuse me, I don't think it should. I'm supposed to have respect for these guys? I was just beat down in Lain County Jail about four months ago, had my arm ripped out of socket. Any action on that besides mine, and my wife's walking out there because I couldn't serve her? Uh-uh. I lost my old lady, I lost my house because this punk deputy sheriff got away with it in our city. City council won't help me, city police won't help me, sheriffs won't help me. I'm going to the state. I'm going to the federal government. All right? You guys want martial law? We can have martial law. I think we'd be better off with martial law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sierra Lupe, followed by Pauline Hudson.
Members of city council, I have been a citizen of this fair city for over 25 years.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sue Sierra Lupe. Pardon me. Councilman Brown is my neighborhood representative. In addition to working a full-time job and homeschooling, I have had the honor of serving as volunteer coordinator for Occupy Eugene Medical Clinic. Our clinic is staffed every Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00 in downtown park blocks by fabulous team of dedicated volunteers. Every week, we set up our Band-Aid-colored tent. We are gathered, greeted by a crowd of people eager to use our medical services. Every week, we have at least one admiring member of the community offer their services as volunteer, because they see the need that we feel. The volunteers at Occupy Eugene Medical Clinic are not only saving lives, we are changing lives. We are joined by other organizations to alleviate the suffering that we see in this community. We have arranged with St. Vincent de Paul to orchestrate a free dental clinic. On any given Sunday, we, at the clinic, treat 1/3 to 1/4 of the patients for excruciating dental pain. The dental clinic is a dream come true for all of us. On Sunday, June 3rd, I showed up at the park blocks to sign up our patients for the limited space that we have in this dental clinic. It was, unfortunately, the start of the social cleansing, prompted by the complaints by business owners eager to tuck homeless youth out of sight before the Olympic trials. I was able, in the seven hours that I was at the park blocks, to sign up two patients for our dental clinic, two. The Eugene Police is made of talented problem solvers. They understand what a service our clinic is to Eugene. They see the effects. It makes their jobs easier. I would suggest that visitors to the Olympic trials would be impressed by a community that reaches out to the poor and the suffering. I would suggest that the police would be happier working to stop real crime than badgering homeless kids for petty offenses. I would suggest that by letting Occupy Eugene Medical Clinic do our jobs at no cost to anyone, our community will be a better place to live in for all of us, including the downtown business owners. I beg you to stop the bullying, harassment, and exclusion of my patients. We need to solve the problems in our community, but it can only be fixed with compassion and common sense, not by abuse. Please, let us help our patients. I promise it'll be worth it. Thank you.
Pauline Hudson is next, followed by Eugene Dricks.
Excuse me. My name is Pauline Hudson of Elmont. I live at 1025 Taylor Street. Time to be blunt, time is running out. We are the victims of this tragically destructive bus system. 61 miles of trees destroyed, unbelievable. They also are sound barriers. Do not destroy this habitat. I'm not being melodramatic. This is reality. Our lives are in jeopardy, and the trees, and the environment. The city is also being wrecked. Redevelopment still doesn't work. Broadway is still a wasteland, no character. Driving through that four-way intersection, the place is lifeless, cheaply-built, ugly little boxes with long-term vacancy rates. When you became mayor, we were so happy, the progressives and environmentalists. We thought you would side with us to some extent, and now you have turned into our living nightmare. Over the past five years, you have come to hate us. Are we getting in the way of slowing you down, slowing down your ability to complete your personal political legacy? Do you really not think about the awful consequences of all this destruction? So callous, uncaring. Eugene is the last place MX should be. A bus every 10 minutes is insane. West 11th does not have the ridership, even professional consultants agree. Now LTD is saying the buses will be for an hour, an ugly truth. The mayor bullying others to change their votes. This is not democracy. You have to face reality sometimes. So face by going down Coburg Road, tons of people in vehicles, traffic jams. Getting onto Coburg Road from side streets and driveways is horrible. The business owners kept you from going down Coburg Road. Why are the West 11th business owners being treated differently? You chose West 11th because you think it's an ugly, an ugly strip mall. Coburg Road is a strip mall, just a little fancier. You wanted to redevelop West 11th. This corridor is built for vehicle traffic. You're not going to take the bus to an auto parts store or a furniture outlet. Obviously, Coburg Road is the best place, ideal for all the reasons you claim make West 11th the choice, great ridership base, apartment complexes, shopping centers, office complexes, major business presence, restaurants, lots of pedestrians. It's already wide, so far less destruction. You don't necessarily have to have the problems with access, the big issue originally. Simply expand the current bus stops. For over five years, you've listened to us, thinking, "If only they knew." Not a chance of success for us. You were voted in to be our representatives, to speak for us, not for personal political agendas. We feel helpless, and this is not right. You would be doing the same thing in our shoes.
Eugene Dricks, you're next, and then Joseph CDZ.
It's nice to be here. Thank you. It's nice to be here right now. And that could be one of many nows. There's a now, right now, Monday night, when we're all here, when we'd like to be home in our sofa. There's a now when this broadcast is repeated on our cable system over and over and over again, and everyone can see it. There's also a now on the internet, when people can watch this whenever they want. And that all boils together to be a forum of our community, and it's wonderful, and I thank you on behalf of all of us to give us that voice. It's supposed to be what America is, too. We're all a chorus here, a choir. Everyone's got another chord, everyone's got another piece of the truth, and you mix it together, and this is what we have. So thank you. Boy, none of this is what I was going to talk about, but I'm never sure what I'm going to talk about anyway. This week is a big week in my neighborhood, in the one, the West University neighbors. We're west of university, but east of everyone else. It's finals week. Right now, there's kids sweating over, making sure they pass their exams this week, so their parents are happy, and then they can go home. There's going to be a lot of moving out, and our neighborhood logo is a sofa in the front yard. It's kind of an odd phenomenon we have in our neighborhood, and this week, there'll be dozens of them. I just want to kind of alert everybody that a lot of kids, when it's time to go home, they just toss it. I guess it's an American way, but I know we're not supposed to dumpster dive, but if anyone wants to take the long way home and drive down the alleys, there's a lot to be had. And please, it's better to reuse, recycle, restore than just to dump. So, there, I said that, but didn't say it. Moving along. Next thing, this is kind of my commencement address. None of these things are commencement topics, but I just want to be timely, so I could call it that. I would like to point out an interesting observation about democracy. The internet, I love the internet. I like to think the internet is the freedom that everyone fought all these wars for, especially World War II. It's so free, it scares people. Yeah, isn't that great? And there's some things going on the internet that are interesting. You know, when you go shopping and you buy something, you get the opportunity to come back and talk about what that product was like. I feel that's a form of democracy, just to say, you know, "This thing's a piece of work," or "This thing is wonderful." But now, there's another little box, like, "What do you think of that person's comment? Did it help you, or did it not help you?" And I think we should call that double democracy, which is, yeah, it's a checks and balance, but it still keeps the people going, and it's a new way to communicate, much like this is, much like, "Thank you all for being here, and thank you." And we're the people at home, why don't they come down here? Am I the only one that talks about happy stuff? Jeez. This is Eugene. I mean, we are a beautiful city, and the world knows it, and it's our turn. And here's the yellow light. While I'm talking, I cough whenever I see the yellow light comes on. So next time someone, just so that buzzer doesn't get you, just, and there's a cough, I'm done. Thank you, and have a good weekend.
Okay, Joseph CDZ is next, followed by Carla Newberry.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager, staff, audience, people out in Wonderland out there. My name is Joseph Sekulicnytski. I live at 1025 Taylor Street, Ward 1. Referring to previous topics, I support a homeless shelter. Eugene's got all these services. You've got incredible social services here. Take the next step forward. Take the next big leap forward and get something for the homeless people, a place for them to be able to stay, sleep at night in a safe place. I was homeless by choice many years ago, for about nine months. It's not easy. It was a choice, got out of it, don't want to go back. Second point of view, I've never had a corporation walk up to me and say hello or good morning in any language. I don't consider that a person. That's all I need to say about that one. I'd like to talk about staffs. You use staffs, they inform you theoretically, this is all theory, but you have to question the staffs. I've been involved with a lot of staffs, LTD staff, your planning staff, your transportation staffs, your budget staffs. I was on the county planning commission for seven years, I dealt with the staffs there. Staffs are hired people. They're hired to do what they know best, and that's the point of view they're going to bring in. That's the only point of view they're going to bring in. They're not going to... So if you don't ask a question, they're not going to answer it. You have too much faith in your staffs. They make a lot of mistakes. They run over a lot of people. You have a sign over there on the wall that says, "The people are the city," Shakespeare and Cornelius. No? Well, in this town, the staffs are the city. That's not right. You talk to a transportation person, and they're talking in a language that is foreign. They don't know how to speak regular talk, and they don't take input. The staffs, whether they're here, whether they're in Washington DC, whether they're in the Kremlin, or in Myanmar, you know, you just have to start questioning your staffs a little more, be a little more critical, because I don't feel that you should believe everything they tell you. You've got to question them. I found that out on the planning commission, because they'll lie to you. Happened to me, more than once. Staff will tell this person one thing, staff will tell that person another thing, depending upon what question you ask, and there are opposite answers.
Carla Newberry is next, followed by Gordy Alby.
Good evening. Carla Newberry, I'm in Councilor Brown's Ward. Well, I'm back. You haven't seen me for a while, because I've been in China. I was there for 26 days. Great trip, got to see a lot of the country. Couldn't help making comparisons. Couldn't help making comparisons between home and China. Obviously, when you travel, you do that a lot. One thing I noticed is that they have public bathrooms everywhere, really well signed. It's so good to know we're catching up with China. Well done. There are other issues that I couldn't help comparing and contrasting. One of them was, of course, on their human rights record, which, as we all know here, isn't very good. There was an issue that was in progress while I was there that was successfully resolved. But over here, we were saying, what happened to this dissident's human rights? In China, you'll hear from everybody, China is a free country, to which I always had to bite my tongue and not reply, yeah, as long as you don't speak out against your government. Here, we have the great privilege and right to speak out against our government, for which I'm very, very grateful. And I have spoken out, as everyone here certainly knows. Hopefully, I do it in such a way that some cooperation and collaboration can be reached, and solutions that do find common ground. One of the things that has been mentioned here is housing as a human right. That's one thing where, I'm sorry to say, we're way behind China. You know, this is a free country, but it's not free to sleep. If you want to lay your head down, what do you have to do? You have to pay rent, you have to pay mortgage if you're traveling, have to pay motel. It's not free to sleep. And this town has done more than make it expensive to sleep. It's illegal to sleep anywhere. Our town denies, through its laws and ordinances, the legal right to take care of certain basic needs. You have a unique opportunity, not just in helping move forward on the opportunity, the opportunity Village Plan, but also on the other five recommendations that the task force put before you. I urge you to not lose sight of those. There are so many aspects where we could be doing so much better by our most vulnerable community members, and I urge you to move on that, because we are talking about human rights. Thank you.
Gordy Alby is next, and Eric Hall follows. Gordy.
Good evening. Thank you. Now, a little bit of ancient history. There used to be a place called Hooverville, and it was right by Portland. On every Sunday, we, the four of us and the family, the kids, and we would load up the car, and we would go down to Hooverville. And my father would take a board, and he'd try to go up and down the, and there are lots of people in Hooverville. We'd go up and down, and he would take the experience anybody had, anybody in the family had work experience. That was the excuse for getting inside their little homes, their shacks. And they really were shacks. Most of them leaked. Then, when he got inside, he'd say, oh, stay, I've got somebody in the car, it's just about your size. He'd come out and get one of us, and we'd take the clothes in, you know, could you use this? So we were all invited in. And so this went on for probably four years, I'd say, Hooverville. This is about 1933. Surely before all of you, anyway. When my father died, many years later, I couldn't believe the mail we got and the outcome of all of, all of that work, the jobs, the work that people got, the food that they got, how they were bailed out, and I just, it was such a beautiful ending to this story that I wanted to share it with you, because surely, we can do it if Portland can.
Thank you. Eric Hall is our final speaker.
My name's Eric Hall. My architectural office is located at 116 Highway 99. I had three things I wanted to offer for your consideration tonight. One of them is that I hope you will continue to support the inclusion of the Sunset Clause in the rental housing code. You've heard a lot tonight about folks at the low end of means and the effects that costs have on them. And I think this opportunity to extend that Sunset Clause allows us to look at significant reductions in those costs. Until we can generate that notion that this is a good and proper expenditure of the citizen's money, it seems only prudent to keep a watchful eye on the good being done and the related costs of achieving that good. Two, I hope you won't forget some of the other recommendations that came from that special subset of the Housing Policy Board, especially the following, that the rental housing code program be continued but modified, that staff explore methods for reducing the cost of the program, that staff develop an online system that would enable the public to access deals, details about complaints, that staff would make more information available online, and that staff explore outsourcing portions of the program. Third, and this one entails an apology to Counselor Taylor. Ms. Taylor, you have on numerous occasions asked the question, what's the big deal? It's only $10 a door, and after all, the tenants don't have to pay for it, the landlords do. Well, as the son of four previous generations of teachers, I thought it was appropriate for me to bring the following information to this informal classroom, and I apologize for not doing it sooner, since I know this has been on your mind for at least a year now. And so to help with this, I have quickly created this illustration. As you can see, each rental door in the city of Eugene, rents are paid to the landlord. This represents the income side of the equation. On the other side of the equation are the expenses. These are the things such as property taxes, property insurance, management fees, and in most instances, payments to the bank. As you can see, when you subtract one side from the other, the landlord hopes to end up with a little bit left over. For many of your citizenry that aren't so fortunate to have a purse pension waiting for them, this is often a critical component of their retirement income. And so if the landlord doesn't have the anticipated amount left at the end of each month, then they need to make some adjustments, either by reducing expenses if they can, or raising rental rates. And so every time you add a new expense to a rental door, you need to know that ultimately, the only ones that pays for this new expense is the renter. Yes, in the short term, the landlord has to make out the check and send it to the city, and then they go back and make adjustments to the rent. And that is why you don't often see more landlords at these meetings. They know that these are just pass-through costs that will need to be paid by the students, the seniors, everyone that rents to meet their housing needs. And that is why this is a big deal. As a matter of principle, some of the members of the ROA Board and others have asked you to consider this.
Thank you. Close of public hearing. I'm going to thank everyone for speaking so eloquently tonight. I just wanted a couple comments. Many, I happen to know that many homeless people do vote. And I want to thank Jerry for his help with someone needing a wheelchair in a terrible situation. Appreciate that, and think that's just the kind of stepping forward we need in our community. I want to thank Andy for bringing his book on homeless camps that he's learned about all over the United States, and so I appreciate the opportunity to see that. And I was just going to recommend to Drixte that he needs to call St. Vinnie's and talk to Terry, and maybe he can find some treasures in the dumpsters that you're talking about. Okay, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everyone coming tonight. Is Pauline still here, or has she leave already? Perhaps she's watching at home, and I, we don't always agree, but I hope that in these opportunities for us to speak, to be heard, that we do so about policies and not personalities and not people. And I would encourage her to, while I agree with Pauline about the issues around MX, I don't agree sometimes with the way she frames what she says in such a pointed manner, and I hope she'll consider changing that. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank everybody for coming down tonight. So this was a, I'm glad that we have such a robust public comment, because it really did cover a spectrum of issues, and one that seemed to be a little bit of a recurrent theme, and what I've just been hearing out in the community is the whole issue around the downtown Public Safety Zone. City Manager, I had heartburn supporting it. It's going to be coming up for review for the end of the year, I think. So what I'd like to ask my fellow counselors is, what is success when we talk about this that we put on our community? You know, I, the chief has been trying to do a really good job of giving us feedback on what's been going on there, but we didn't really define what the success was, in my mind. Is it statistics? Is it more people getting arrested? Is it less people getting arrested? Is it a better feeling of the community? I don't know. And so I would hope that we could talk about this amongst ourselves and kind of come up with what we, our expectations of this is, because I was more than, originally, when I had downtown, I heard a lot from the business owners, but I supported it even though it kind of went against the grain of who I am, and it really gave me heartburn this last time when we asked for an extension. So I just really want to know from my peers, how do we measure success? And from the chief, I mean, I just kind of feel like, you know, he's given us information, but I don't know that that's the information we want, because we didn't articulate to him what we wanted. So I just wanted to share that with you all. And I just really liked the different conversations that we had here tonight. Thank you all for coming down.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, and that's the Consent Calendar. Counsel President.
I move to approve the items on the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no one in the queue, would you please vote on the Consent Calendar? Counselor Brown. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. Go on to the next item. This is an ordinance extending the rental housing code. Counsel President.
Mayor, I'd actually like to read Option 1 first, which was the one that the council decided on the last time we took this up, which removes the Sunset Date.
It's fine, you have the ability to do that.
All right. I have a feeling it will fail, but I'd like to read that anyway. And if it does fail, that will allow me to vote yes on the second option, which I would have to oppose otherwise. Thank you. I move to adopt Council Bill 5073, Option 1, an ordinance removing the Sunset Date from the rental housing code.
Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded. Okay. Counselor Pryor.
I move to substitute Option 2.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Counselor Pauling.
That's okay, Mayor. I had the button to get in to do exactly what Counsel Pryor did.
Okay, all right. Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something about what's going to happen next, Mr. City Manager. The, I think regardless of the outcome of the vote, we're intending to come back in the fall with several issues that will have been discussed by the task force that's been working on this community task force. In particular, the issues that I was interested in, and we had a discussion about it previous council work session, was to make our ordinance more like Corvallis', which is what we modeled it after. And in particular, they add key appliances and air infiltration, meaning holes in walls and doors and things, as well as the condition of drywall, which is somewhat related to our mold one. And so those have a conversation about whether or not those should be added to the ordinance. And then the other thing that Corvallis does differently that I found quite appealing was was the quicker fix to problems around heat, hot water, functioning toilets, sink, smoke detectors. Corvallis has a 48-hour turnaround on those, and if it's middle of February and it's freezing and your heat's out, our ordinance allows multiple days, I think seven to 10 days even, to be able to do that. And Corvallis seemed to have figured that one out, and I'm interested in seeing that one do. So those are the issues that I was concerned about. What's the process for moving forward, maybe Stewart or Mr. City Manager, you can help?
Yeah, I'm Stewart Ramsing with Planning and Development. What we're initially doing tonight is the program, if no action is taken with Sunset September, so we separated the two issues. Tonight is the extension of the program. Over the course of the summer, then, at the council's previous motion, we're working with the existing committee that we've done the initial work, this is the Housing Policy Board, a committee of the Housing Policy Board, for some recom... And the plan is to come back in fall of this year to council, addressing a number of the issues you're speaking to.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so now we're ready to vote on the substitute motion. Would you please vote? Six in favor and two in opposition, it passes. So then, that's done, right? Go back to the main motion.
So now, it's been amended and now you can vote?
So amended, not substituted. Okay, all right. So would you please vote on the amended motion? And that six in favor and two in opposition, it passes. Thank you. And we're going to go on to the next item on the agenda, which is appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. We're going to start out with the Budget Committee, and there are three positions, and two names are on, in front of you, and then I don't know what Counselor Brown has intended or someone else for the third position. So we'll start with, Counsel President, do the first position, please.
I move to appoint Jill Featherston-Haw to Position 4 on the Budget Committee for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I don't see any discussion, would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition, congratulations. And then the next one.
I move to appoint Marshall Welda to Position 6 on the Budget Committee for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I don't see anyone in the queue, so please vote on that one. Eight in favor and none in opposition, congratulations. And then the next position.
I move to appoint Robert Clark to Position 8 on the Budget Committee for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, ending on June 30, 2015.
You seconding?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Zelenka.
I move to substitute Richard Varner.
Is there a second? I don't hear any second. Now, we're back to Robert Clark. No one else in the queue, so please vote on that one. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Congratulations. And move on to the Civilian Review Board. Counsel President.
I move to reappoint George Rhodey to Position 5 on the Civilian Review Board for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote on that one. Eight in favor and none in opposition, congratulations. Next up.
I move to reappoint Bernadette Conover to Position 6 on the Civilian Review Board for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Don't see anyone, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Okay, and then we have the next one.
I move to reappoint Deborah Villour to Position 7 on the Civilian Review Board for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. And so that's all the civilian review board. Congratulations, everybody. We're going on to the Human Rights Commission. Counsel President.
I move to reappoint Andrew Thompson to Position 8 on the Human Rights Commission, three-year term beginning on July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Okay, eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Next one.
I move to reappoint Lorraine Kerwood to Position 9 on the Human Rights Commission for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2015.
Moved and...
Second.
Seconded. Okay, no one in the queue, please vote. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. We have one more.
I move to appoint Denise Grewich to Position 10 on the Human Rights Commission for a three-year term beginning on July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2015.
Moved and seconded.
I seconded.
All right. And you want to speak, Counsel Far?
Thank you, yes. Just a point of interest, Denise becomes the second former executive director of Food Plain County to be on the Human Rights Commission.
All right. Okay. So we're going to vote, we haven't voted on that one yet, right? Did we vote on that one? No, please vote on that one. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Congratulations, everyone. Oh, we got one more.
There's one more.
One more. Got a name to put in there?
Yes. I move to appoint Christopher Nunes to Position 2 on the Human Rights Commission, the unexpired term of Martha Fish, ending on June 30, 2014.
The name is?
Christopher Nunes. Christopher Nunes.
Christopher Nunes, okay. And second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Counselor Far.
Just, it is with regret that Martha Fish will no longer be serving on the Human Rights Commission. Martha has for a long time been, this is her second stint at the Human Rights Commission, been a very effective commissioner.
Okay. Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, and that finishes up the Human Rights Commission, and now we'll move on to the Planning Commission.
I move to reappoint Mark Stephen Baker to Position 1 on the Planning Commission for a four-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2016.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote on that one. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Congratulations. We're going to move on to the Police Commission now.
I move to reappoint Caitlin Langley to Position 1 of the Police Commission for a four-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2016.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote on that one. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Next one.
I move to reappoint Juan Carlos Vallee to Position 2 of the Police Commission for a four-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2016.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. Next one.
I move to reappoint James Garner to Position 3 of the Police Commission for a four-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2016.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Last one.
I move to appoint Joe Tindall to Position 8 of the Police Commission for a four-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2016.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Far.
Thank you, Mayor. The other three were reappointments. This is a, an actual first-time appointment for Joe Tindall, who is in the audience. Clarification, on the Police Commission, commissions are typically council decided and appointed. The Police Commission is a little different, is that correct?
What it does is the Police Commission makes their recommendation to me, and then I make my recommendation to you, and in this case, I supported the recommendation that came out of the Police Commission.
Thank you for the clarification, Mayor.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to substitute for William Whalen and speak to it if I get a second.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
Thank you. My understanding, I was not there for that evening of the Police Commission, but I had several co-members of the Police Commission that mentioned to me that the committee that did show up, one of the members was not able to be there and was, and felt badly about that, but would have supported William Whalen, I think was the, was the comment that I got. I've known Bill for a very long time and served with him on the Kids First Board, which was at the time the Child Advocacy Center. He has a, a history of working with organizations to help kids too, and I, I hope that we can support him. I know that Joe has a great history here now, speaking out and being involved, and that's appreciated too. But based on my knowledge of what the Police Commission members mentioned to me, I'd like to support William.
So I will just add to this, that of the people who showed to do the, make the recommendation, there were three, and two of them highly recommended Joe. I think both candidates are really good, and either one would be very, do a good job, I feel sure, but this is a recommendation that came out of the Police Commission. I did talk to Joe about the difference between serving on a Police Commission and advocacy, and he understands fully the difference in those, those roles. Okay, so are you ready to vote on this one? You're now voting on the substitute, which is for, yes, Bill Whalen. All right, please vote. Three in favor and five in opposition, it goes down. You're back to Joe Tindall. Please vote for Joe Tindall. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. Go on to the Sustainability Commission. Okay. Oh, I formally recognize, I'm going to read this part. I formally recognize the following counselor-appointed members of the Sustainability Commission. Sean Bowles is reappointed to the Ward 1 position for a term expiring June 30, 2016. Howie Bonnet is reappointed to the Ward 2 position for a term expiring June 30, 2016. Don Leslie is appointed to the Ward 3 position for a term expiring June 30, 2016. Kathy Jaworski is reappointed to the Ward 4 position for a term expiring June 30, 2016. And then Council President.
I move to appoint Sasha Lifteg to Position 2 on the Sustainability Commission to the unexpired term of Art Farley, ending on June 30, 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no one in the queue, would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Okay. And the next one.
I move to appoint Sarah Mase to Position 4 on the Sustainability Commission to the unexpired term, ending on June 30, 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Taylor.
I move to substitute Lori Bernstein.
Is there a second? There is no second. We'll move on. Counselor Far.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have an pending appointment for, for my, my appointment to the Sustainability Commission. I'm in consideration of that currently.
Great. Counselor Polling.
Move to substitute Steven Adams for Position 4.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, so you're going to vote on this substitute appointment that Counsel Polling put forward. Please vote on that. Three in favor and five in opposition, it does not pass. You're back to the, who is the name?
Sarah Mase.
Sarah Mase. Oh, yeah, great. So please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Congratulations to all of these folks. We're going to go on to the Toxics Board. Council President.
I move to reappoint Richard Nickall to Position 3, the Business Representative on the Toxics Board, for a three-year term beginning on July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Next one, Council President.
I move to reappoint Randall Prince to Position 6, an advocacy representative on the Toxics Board for a three-year term beginning on July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Okay, we're going to go now to the Willamute Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee.
I move to appoint Arianna Ferguson to Position 3 on the Willamute Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee to a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, passes. Next.
I move to appoint Lucia Hardy to Position 4 on the Willamute Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee to a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, passes. Next.
I move to appoint Vitti Roy to Position 7 on the Willamute Natural Area Citizens Planning Committee to a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Next.
I move to appoint James Trimboli to Position 10 on the Willamute Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee to a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes.
I move to reappoint Vicki Mello to Position 13 on the Willamute Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee to a three-year term beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Congratulations, everybody, and we are now through with the boards and commission appointments. I just want to acknowledge that we have two people in this room who have sat through a very long meeting and done just an excellent job of sitting out there in the audience, and way to go, guys. That's Counselor Clark's children. I tell you, that's patience. I want you to know that's patience. So we have committee reports, we, and I will just ask if anybody has any report they would like to make. Any report anybody would like to make. Well, with that, then I will just say, job done for this evening. Thank you. Oh, George. Okay, great.